Call a meeting to order, can I have a roll call please?
Marie Claire Goram.
Here.
John Crisher.
Here.
Susan Murphy. Phil Pardue.
Here.
Mary Jo Williams.
Here.
We have a quorum and please remember to speak into your microphones.
A place for legions please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we get started here. We're going to pull items seven and eight today for later date, could have a motion to pull those two items to a later date.
Okay, I make a motion to remove the items seven and eight from today's agenda and reschedule for a future meeting.
Second that motion.
Okay, do we have any comment from any of the board members on this? Anything from the public?
Hi, just to say hello to all of you, is this working?
Yeah.
It doesn't, a lot of days. I'm Bob Delves, I'm recently elected to city council and recently appointed as your mayor pro tem, and I wanted to first up by and say hello and say thank you. I've been on the planning commission for almost five years and I know what it's like to govern to an empty room, I mean, well, and Cindy. And that we as board members often don't get thanked for what we do, so thank you. Secondly, I wanted to speak on this topic, and the topic being the legal document or legal arrangement between the city and the Carmel Public Library Foundation. I've gotten much more deeply involved in this topic in the last 20 days than I certainly thought I would, and I wanted to give you guys sort of a report out on what I've been up to and why. And when, I'll go back in time, prior to running for office, I really was unaware, I was unaware of what you all do, I was unaware of the distinctions of the trust, I was unaware of the foundation, and I was unaware of any ongoing discussions to raise some money and make some changes, some improvements to the library. And when I was running, I learned more about that, and then after getting elected, actually through Mayor Byrne, I learned more because I know he replaced Mayor Potter on the Architect Selection Committee, and so that opened his eyes to a process which indirectly opened my eyes to it. And kind of the next step in the process was we, as a city council, saw the draft of an agreement at a city council meeting, and we spent three hours on the topic. And it was kind of a, for me it was a surprising meeting because we, I didn't know we were going to be negotiating an agreement in public, and I've never done that before. And by the way, some background, I'm primarily a software businessman, but I was the mayor of a town in Colorado for eight years, so I've seen a lot of public process and done actually quite a bit of work on contracts between cities and various parties, including a variety of joint ventures, and specifically joint ventures that include the city, in one case the city, a private sector entity, a homeowners association, and a nonprofit, all building, buildings for various uses and with philanthropy involved, so I've seen these complexities before. So when I looked at that agreement, I'll fast forward, we got to the end of the meeting, Hans Buder, Chairman Buder, Councilman Buder made a motion, that motion suggested nine different things, but primarily what it focused on was making sure the city did not delegate authority. And so that's the main thing, right, is that as we go forward with the process, that all of the city processes have to be respected, all of the city entities have to be respected, that the city and the various city entities own, well, the city owns the building, and that there have to be checks and balances in the project to ensure that the city has the voice, has control, if you will. And so over the last, since we made that motion, and I'm going to say that was 10 days ago, I've just paid attention. I'm good with legal documents, I've been watching them, we'll go back and forth, and what I start to see is red lines going back and forth between lawyers, and I've been around long enough to know that if the lawyers are just playing ping pong, you're actually not making progress. So I've just tried to insert myself a little bit and encourage some progress, and I'm not here to tell you where we are, other than I think we're making really good progress. And I'll leave it at that. And I gave each of you my code, I return phone calls fast and would be happy to engage with you as well, Ashley, I reached out to you last night, because I've kind of been, I've been moving so fast, I haven't taken the time to check in with you all, so I'm checking in, but I welcome your phone calls, and thanks again for what you do.
Well, thank you very much.
I have any questions?
No, I think the board is very much behind the project, we have our five points that we want to, the board's very dedicated to the library and really care about it, and I think our number one thing is to keep our five points and the public's involved. It's a great project, it's just we wanted to go through too, and we want to make sure the public is taken care of, it's our job.
I should, thank you, I forgot I meant to say, really, why am I so motivated by this? And it's, I ran for city council because I pay attention to the city finances, and I'm afraid nobody does, enough, especially in the public. And that, nobody's talking about it, but I think our city finances are highly concerning.
Right.
And, you know, just one number is our net pension liability, so our unfunded pension liability is about $30 million. If the pension board, if CalPERS earns 1% less on their returns, that liability doubles, that's 60 million bucks. So, and we have to respect that, because I don't have any alchemy to kind of solve that, but that, when I put that on top of the potential fragility of some of our revenue sources and a lot of deferred maintenance on all of our buildings, when I hear that philanthropy could be a source of revenue, I pay attention, I have to, because I think we have to figure out that model, and I think this particular effort can set the template that perhaps we can do the same thing with a police station or a public works building. Maybe, I think you just want to, so that's really where I'm coming from, I mean, the library building, I've been through it, I toured it, toured both of them with Ashley, is in much better shape than most of our buildings. And so if you asked me, you know, priorities, which ones are first, it's the police station and public works, for sure, but when the philanthro, when a philanthropic organization wants to focus on one that still needs work, I'm going to try to get to yes, with respecting all the things you mentioned, Jen, so thanks.
Thank you again, thank you very much. Can we get a roll call for the motion?
Marie Claire Goram.
Yes.
Phil Pardue.
Yes.
Mary Jo Williams.
Yes.
John Crisher.
Yes.
Approved, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the next item, which is...
One question before we move on, so the, it seems as if the city lawyer would like us to look at the agreement before it goes to the council for a vote, so the, do we need to be ready to have a special meeting so that we do not hold the process up?
Yes, that's why we didn't, that's why we didn't, that's why a date wasn't specified, that's why, so we're nimble, so we can, anytime that agreement is ready, we can call a special meeting and be ready to forward that on to the city council, whether it's a special meeting that they hold, you know, there's some budget hearings coming up that that could be tacked on to, or the next regular meeting, so we're ready to go.
Any other questions, may I, buddy? Okay, we'll move on to the extraordinary business. We have a receiver presentation from Robin Ashman about the Murphy original design and construction of Harrison Memorial Library.
I have a little visual aid, shall I just lean it against the wall? I'm not a public speaker, and I've never used a PowerPoint, so bear with me. Thank you for having me, I'll say that several times. My name is Robin Ashman, I live in PG, grew up in Monterey and Carmel, I consider myself a Monterey Peninsula, all communities are part of my 83 years. The Carmel part, which I barely remember, on Dolores and Ninth during World War II. During the 50s, I spent much of my time with my beloved grandmother Ivy Murphy Basham. She lived on the southwest corner of Camino Real and Seventh and had what today would be called a bed and breakfast. Thank you for making time for me to share a brief bit about MJ Murphy and his role in Harrison Memorial Library. Often those who seek information on MJ end up at the Carmel Valley lumberyard. Tom Gladney gives them a copy of this booklet, this is an original and I'll pass it around so you can see it, but please don't remove it from the protective cover. The undated, probably early 1930s booklet contains sketches of Murphy's projects, names are given, no addresses. I have a copy for each of you that I'll give you at the end with a copy of my talk. Not as upscale as this one, Tom is MJ and Edna Murphy's grandson, president of the company, I am MJ, I'm Murphy's grand niece. I call my talk "The Visionaries: Unlikely Companions." In 1885, when young Michael Murphy was born on the 480-acre family ranch in Mendon, Utah, 23-year-old Bernard Maybeck, somewhat newly graduated from the, forgive my pronunciation, from the École École des Beaux-Arts Paris, was working in New York for Thomas Hastings, a Cole classmate, participating in Hastings' projects, which included the Ponce de León and Alcazar Hotels in Florida. In 1895, Maybeck, 33, had worked his way to San Francisco and was well on his way to a distinguished career. Michael Murphy, 10, was on his way to helping his mother establish the second homestead on what today, is today known as the Curlew National Grasslands, a failed government homesteading location in southern Idaho. The widowed Emma Murphy family had suddenly gone from riches to rags. Michael would help his mom with building the largest log house in the valley, cutting, transporting, and selling logs to other homesteaders, building a dream. In 1902, called to Carmel by James Franklin Devendorf, young Michael, aged 17, built his first Carmel-by-the-Sea structure, a modest home for his mom and five of her youngest of 12. Oops, let's go back, there's only 11 in there, one of them is missing, not that you counted, and MJ is the one in the hat, and my grandmother stands beside him next to the only other male in the Murphy family. Let's see, they built his first Carmel-by-the-Sea structure, a modest home for his mom and five of her youngest children, Michael, one of them. He would fetch the bathwater, fill the tub, and take first dibs on using it. In 1902, 40-year-old Bernard Ben Maybeck was designing homes in the Berkeley Hills, an unbuilt structure for the University of California. We interrupt to show the first house on its flight to a new location. And homes in San Francisco, some extent, just as is the first Murphy, saved in 1991 by the City of Carmel and a well-organized team of volunteers, volunteers who donated both time and skills. In 1948, 40-year, 1910, excuse me, 48-year-old Maybeck designed the extraordinary First Church of Christ Scientist in Berkeley. In 1917, 32-year-old MJ Murphy designed and built the First Church of Christ Scientist at the corner of Santa Rita and Fifth in Carmel. In 1918, Ralph Chandler Harrison, Associate Justice of the Supreme Court, died. Judge Harrison had an extensive personal library, he served 27 years with San Francisco Library Board of Trustees. The Harrisons were passionate book collectors. Mrs. Harrison took comfort in having books about her, from collector's editions to just good reads. Ella Spencer Reed Harrison donated land and funds for a new and larger library for the village she would adopt as her home. She had Joe Moore design a building because he was on the Library Board of Trustees. Timing was poor, World War I and a flu pandemic. In 1919, Mrs. Harrison, niece of Whitelaw Reed, ambassador to England and publisher of the New York Herald Tribune, recent widow of Ralph Chandler Harrison, moved to Carmel. She and her lady friends had been visiting Carmel since 1914, she liked the pace. Carmel Board of Trustees and the community were not of one mind. Mrs. Harrison's project proceeded slowly. In 1919, MJ Murphy was building Tor House for Robinson and Eunice Jeffers. MJ and Edna Murphy loaned the Jeffers family the use of the Murphy Twins' stroller. Twins Rosalie and Kathleen Murphy were born in 1914, Donna and Garth Jeffers were born in 1916. This is in front of the Murphy House, extent but horribly cared for on the corner of Monteverde and Ninth, note the street, it's sand. In 1919, Bernard Maybeck designed San Francisco's idyllic Forest Hill Neighborhood Association Building, still in use and coveted and loved today. In 1922, Ella Spencer Reed Harrison died in a fire in her Carmel cottage, her personal book collection and the Moore Library plans, per Neil Hoddling, historian, died with her. Harrison Memorial Library did not proceed apace. Mr. Maybeck's output is well documented, universally known, revered, and includes the Palace of Fine Arts, Phoebe Hurst's Wintune, the Packard Automobile Showroom, San Francisco, the Byington Ford House in Pebble Beach. And Murphy went on to build, among many, the Highlands Inn, the Monterey Peninsula Country Club, the La Playa Hotel after a fire, Pine Inn, the Hacienda at the Santa Lucia Preserve, Carmel's first bank, and my favorite, the Klugel Home on North Camino Real. Many were his design, plans drawn and built by MJ Murphy was his characteristic signature. Then, in 1926, Chapel Hudson art artist and retired professor of art, who was instrumental in forming the art department at UC Berkeley, and husband of Sidney Yard's daughter, relocated to the Monterey Peninsula after the Judson's Bay Area home burned. Sidney Yard was the first professional artist to settle in Carmel-by-the-Sea, 1905. The Judsons hired MJ Murphy to design and build their Pebble Beach home at 1456 Riada Road. This is a photo taken of the house in 2020. The 1927 Memorial Library design imitates, using more modest materials and size, one story, not two, with a basement, I don't know if this house has a basement, the 1926 Chapel Hudson Home. This is a not unusual design choice by many in the field of architecture and building. This is a copy of a letter written from the Murphy, to Maybeck, requesting kindly the return of their original sketch of the proposed library to be built in Carmel. This is a copy of the response from Maybeck. And this is a copy from the current mayor of Carmel, Jordan, asking for the drawings for the fireplace which Maybeck designed. Notable characteristics of Murphy-designed buildings often include multiple interior levels in one inch which one passes through one room to stairs up or down to the next room. Built-in cabinetry may fill in sometimes wasted space. Structures are typically placed well back on the building site, entries uniquely placed not in the prominent exterior front, but through a truck-rock path and courtyard to an unobtrusive side of the structure and a welcoming front door. All these Murphy traditions are present in Harrison Memorial Library. And finally, permitted, it could be factually stated of the above-mentioned talented and successful visionaries, that all but one came from privileged upbringings, privileged lives. All but one had received the very best formal education. MJ Murphy, whose formal education ended when he was around 10, was an autodidact, a skilled designer of buildings varying from modest cottages to grand public structures. He and his wife Edna were workaholics. Edna worked at the business of MJ Murphy Incorporated until the day she died in 1954. Young Michael began working at age 10 in 19, at age 10, in 1940, when 55, MJ retired to their home on the Mackenzie River. The photographer, I'd like to point out, Evans, you'll see on the lower corner, and Mackenzie misspelled, the photographer was Hugh Evans, Murphy's nephew. Hugh would come, go on to become Judge Superior Court of Sacramento County in 1974, this was on his honeymoon. I would like to share this excerpt from pages 12 and 13 of the DPR for the Palace of Fine Arts, San Francisco. DPRs are not infallible, in fact, the DPR on the first Murphy contains more than one error. Begin quote, Willis Polk, a leading San Francisco architect, was given the Plum Commission to design the Palace of Fine Arts, overworked and unable to conceive a satisfactory solution for the site, Polk invited the exposition draftsman to make suggestions. In her pioneering study, Five California Architects, Esther McCoy recounts, with his usual loose and atmospheric approach to preliminary design, he sketched a gallery, an elliptical colonnade, and rotunda in charcoal. The sketch was passed along by Polk to other members of the Architectural Commission. The person most impressed by the sketch was Henry Bacon of New York, designer of the Lincoln Memorial. You will hear of this someday, he promised Maybeck. Ignoring student, ignoring protests from some of the exposition directors, who wanted only recognized architects with a demonstrated record of major commission, Polk magnanimously turned over his assignment to Bernard Maybeck. Then, 51-years-old, the architect was chiefly known for residential and church design, as well as for his unworldly eccentricity. Despite Maybeck's education at the École des Beaux-Arts and his influence as a teacher, many did not take him seriously, a colleague remarked. Paraphrasing, I suggest that by giving Maybeck design credit for Harrison Memorial Library, many do not take MJ Murphy seriously, deferring to the now widely and deservedly recognized Bernard Maybeck, who himself was once not taken seriously. I don't think that you can probably read what that says, but I can tell you, it says, BR Maybeck Consulting Architect, MJ Murphy Architectural Drawing and Superintendent of Construction. Murphy didn't use, as the booklet will show you, the word "design," for him it was "draw", draw and build. Murphy papers were destroyed, there are precious few, they share a Rubbermaid tub with the paternal side of Edna and MJ's grandson's father, Andy Gladney. So I visited the Maybeck archives where they're building UC Berkeley, no structure plans, there are drawings for light fixtures, some furnishings, a fireplace, and letters, you've seen the letters. Copies are in your pocket. James Franklin Murphy, MJ and Edna's son, born 1904, took a leading part in the business following his 1924 graduation from UC Berkeley. Frank's deathbed, 1978, comment was, "Don't let them tell you, Maybeck." Frank's deathbed, nineteen seventy-eight comment was, don't let them tell you Maybeck designed the library, dad did. Frank and Roe remembered watching their dad create plans late into the night, an oil lamp his light. Roe remembered her father would meet Maybeck at the Monterey train station, take him to Carmel to look at the project. Maybeck would sign off, then M.J. would return him to the train station. Maybeck died in nineteen fifty-seven, age ninety-five. M.J. Murphy died in nineteen fifty-nine, age seventy-four. A timeline nineteen eighteen to nineteen twenty-eight of the design envelop development of the Harrison Memorial Library is included in your packet. I have a note among my papers. It's in Roe Murphy Gladney's hand. It says, don't let them tell you Maybeck designed the library, dad did. My closing request, Murphy descendants respectfully request approval to donate a small, approximately five or six inch by twelve inch bronze plaque for the library to be placed in an inconspicuous location at the main exterior entry that correctly states, as noted on the nineteen twenty-seven building plans, B.R. Maybeck Consulting Architect, M.J. Murphy Architectural Drawing and Superintendent of Construction, nineteen twenty-seven, nineteen twenty-eight. The plaque, if approved, would be in honor of William Beckett II. I met Bill, a first cousin, in nineteen, in twenty fifteen due to a pine cone article. I met with him then and would interview with him several times until the pandemic. Then he died, May twenty twenty-two. He was ninety-eight years old and sharp. Bill Beckett's younger sis, young, in Bill Beckett's younger years, M.J. Murphy acted the role of grandfather. I learned much of the nitty-gritty of our shared great uncle through Bill's happy memories. When Bill was ten, M.J. gave him his first library card. Harrison Memorial Library was Bill Beckett's steady companion during his twilight years. It is he who a few years ago suggested a plaque crediting M.J. What please is the process for approval and acceptance of the proposal. I note that at the fifth April nineteen ninety-four City Council meeting, item H seven, on the consent agenda states, adopt resolution ninety-four dash forty-seven, agreeing to co-sponsor the Maybeck plaque donor acknowledgement on May fifteenth nineteen ninety-four with the Carmel Public Library Foundation. I have not seen the plaque and wonder if it correctly states the above information. Thank you. On behalf of the Murphy, Michael, of Michael, Michael Murphy and Edna Wilkinson Murphy descendants, they were M.J.'s parents. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there any comments from the public on this?
My name is Citi Lloyd. By introduction for those who don't know me, my parents came, my grandparents came to Carmel in nineteen eleven, and their first association with M.J. Murphy was to have him build them a cottage for their summer vacations from Montreal, Canada, where my grandfather was head of the Department of Botany at McGill University. He had been invited by Dr. McDougall to join a group of scientists at the Carnegie Coastal Lab studying Monterey pine trees and their growth patterns using a dendrograph, which is strapped around the tree, and then they monitor how fast it grows. So they, they did come to Carmel each summer, and at one point, my grandmother, who was a biologist, was concerned about some diseases that were circulating around in the Canadian area. So she and the two boys, my father and his younger brother, spent seven years living in Carmel, and my grand, my father absolutely fell in love with Carmel. So I was fortunate enough that in nineteen thirty-four, when my grandfather retired from McGill, and my grand, my parents moved to Carmel, I got to be born here in nineteen forty-one. So like Robin, I am eighty-three years old, born and raised in Carmel, as were my children and my granddaughter. So we have a long history here and very much, I get a little emotional about this, but Robin's presentation was wonderful. So I will get on with the reason why I am here. I was asked by Doug Schmitz to read his letter to you, which I will give to Leslie when I'm finished. Dear members of the board, in his commencement address at Yale University in June nineteen sixty-two, President Kennedy commented, "The great enemy of truth is myth, persistent, persuasive, and unrealistic. After ninety-eight years of myth, it is time to accept the truth." Michael J. Murphy was the principal designer of the Harrison Memorial Library. The record is clear and concise, abundant and available, factual versus the reigning fiction. There is a certain cachet to a renowned architect's name being attached to the Harrison Memorial, but it isn't a tenant loyal to our history. Bernard Maybeck's fingerprints touched segments of the design. Murphy's fist gripped the accepted plans. One need to look no further than the Murphy scheme of the Sea Chapel Judson House in Pebble Beach, which Robin showed you, to notice the identical twin mirror to the HML. The Judson House was drawn and constructed less than one year before the city of Carmel sought proposals to the to-be-built HML. But a century later, the written record tells us more, much more than just the solo singular photo of the Judson Home. In response to the call for design proposals issued by the city in July nineteen twenty-six, nine local Monterey Peninsula designers, architects, and builders responded. On Friday, February, on Friday, the twentieth of August, the board met at the home of trustee George Wood to review the submittals. There was no Brown Act in nineteen twenty-six. At the conclusion of the meeting, the trustees expressed agreement for a Spanish type of building, but none of the plans submitted were entirely satisfactory. Trustees LaRote and Fenton suggested that a committee be appointed to quote, confer with architect Maybeck in San Francisco, end quote. That proposal was accepted. Within one month following the August twentieth meeting, Wood and colleague John Jordan traveled to San Francisco and met with Maybeck at his office in the Lick Building. Of the nine submitted proposals, they only took Murphy's to Maybeck. Upon returning to Carmel, a board meeting was called for Thursday, the twenty-third of September. At that session, Jordan reported that Maybeck quote, "could not take entire charge of the library plans and construction supervision, that he would advise and consult with Mr. Murphy at all stages of the proceedings." Note the reference to Murphy. The Maybeck Archives at UC Berkeley contain the plans of the various elements that the architect developed for the HML project, the fireplace, reading tables, lighting, interior and exterior color schemes, and the garden wall. There are no preliminary plans or construction drawings of the Harrison in the archival collection. Documentation reveals that two trustees, Wood and Jordan, took the Murphy plans on a trip to San Francisco between the August and September board meetings. Murphy wrote to Maybeck on November eighth nineteen twenty-six, asking for the return, quote, "to us of our original sketch for the proposed library to be built in Carmel." On Tuesday, November twenty-third nineteen twenty-six, the board met at five P.M. The minutes of the trustees' meeting states, quote, "The plans of Mr. Murphy were shown, as was a large color sketch by Mr. Maybeck." Also at this meeting, Murphy, not Maybeck, was given authorization to proceed with developing, quote, "the probable cost of the building in accordance with the plans submitted, and that these plans be accepted tentatively as a basis for estimate." Interestingly, Murphy, and not Maybeck, was tasked with developing the cost of the building in accordance with the plans submitted. Murphy would not be selected as the contractor for the library until nineteen twenty-seven. If these were not Murphy's plans, then he held a status just like Bates and Beckett, Otto and Parks, Stanton and Hastings, and the others whose proposals were rejected in August. Jordan wrote Maybeck on the thirty-first of December nineteen twenty-six, penning, quote, "I understand that you were to send us detailed, a detailed drawing of the fireplace. Mr. Murphy now has reached the point where he needs it and is calling upon me for it," end quote. The information in Jordan's correspondent is consistent with the Maybeck Archives at UC Berkeley. Maybeck designed the fireplace to assimilate into the Murphy drawings. In August nineteen twenty-seven, during the construction of the library, Willard Bassett, owner and editor of the Carmel Symbol Newspaper, proposed a series of questions to Murphy via an open letter in the publication about the library project, including inquiries regarding the roles of Murphy and Maybeck. Amongst these questions posed was, "And who drew the plans for this building you are constructing?" Bernard Maybeck, the noted architect, didn't, did he? They were drawn in your office, weren't they? Bernard Maybeck telling the Carmel City Council that after your draftsman drew them, he would quote-unquote criticize them. Even in nineteen twenty-seven, the Maybeck role in the design of the Harrison Memorial Library was being questioned. Murphy never responded to Bassett, yet editor Bassett had it correct. The role of Maybeck was to review the plans drawn by Murphy and to assimilate a fireplace, lighting, and a garden wall into the project. The promise of history is that eventually the truth prevails. May the High Court of Carmel History, that ultimate and eternal judge of your endeavors, find that this board, at this meeting, in this chamber, on this date, ninety-eight years later, abolish the myth and advance and advocated the truth. Michael J. Murphy designed the Ralph Jenner Harrison Memorial Library, respectfully submitted Douglas J. Schmitz, Carmel by the Sea, twenty-four February nineteen twenty-five. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to the board.
So the, so what we have is the, the Library Foundation wants to put a plaque up crediting Maybeck, and the Murphy family and residents of Carmel by the Sea have done the research and to show that this is a Murphy building where Maybeck is consulting architect.
So I want to clarify, there, there is a Maybeck plaque that exists in the Harrison Memorial Library when you actually, the first level, when you walk into the building, the circ desk, if you look at the, where the nonfiction books are up above, that's a, that's called the Maybeck plaque, and it lists all of the donors, and that was put up in the nineteen nineties. That's what I believe Ms. Eschelman was, was referring to, was that plaque in particular. With regards to the request for a plaque recognizing Mr. Murphy, that's something that we can work on as we go along, whether it's incorporated into the renovation project or something we put up sooner, it can come to this board. I've worked with the city council, and I think the last plaque request I did was a request to put a plaque in the garden recognizing the leadership of one of their members who had passed away. And so I'm familiar with that process, and I'm happy to work through it, and I'll stay in touch with Ms. Eschelman and keep the board apprised of, of that, and with the CPLF and the city council.
Okay. Anybody else? In other words, staff will come up with?
With regards to the plaque, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll, I'll come up with a good, a good balanced approach to, to that, again, making sure that we get something up there that recognizes Mr. Murphy, and, and that's factored into wherever we are with the building project, or perhaps sooner that we can carry, take down and then put back up once that building's completed. So we'll see, we'll see how it works.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We'll close this part out and go to our regular, uh, business now. Okay. All right, let's start out with the, the approval of the minutes for January twenty-second, regular meeting. Go to public appearance first, I goofed up here. Any public appearances, other more? All right, announcements from the trustees.
I'd just like to say we had several beautiful events at the children's library that were very well attended, and my own children ought to have a wonderful time, so we've been very busy, the children's.
All right, anything else? All right. Announcements from the library director.
I do not have any announcements at this time.
All right. Now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes for the January twenty-second meeting, regular meeting. Anybody have any changes to the meeting minutes? All right. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes from the January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five regular meeting.
A second.
All right, could I have a roll call, please?
Marie Claire Guo.
Yes.
Philip Hardu.
Yes.
Mary Jo Williams.
Yes.
John Crisher.
Yes.
All right, we'll move on to receive the librarian report for January meeting.
No major anomalies to report in the librarian's report itself. January, we saw a tick-up in library usage. We always see a little dip in November and December because of the holidays, but we're picking back up again, and our numbers are up over last year-to-date in terms of circulation and library uses in general. I will note and piggyback off Marie Claire's comments, our storytimes and kids programs have been absolutely bumping. I mean, we're fifty, sixty people in that department and moving shelves around so that we can accommodate everybody. It's, it's really great. So if you, you want a raucous time, swing by the library on Tuesday afternoon, Friday afternoon for crafts, Wednesday morning for storytime, yesterday, tomorrow, I think we've got yoga, baby and me yoga, so very, very busy over at the Park Branch. Any questions about the librarian's report?
I will attest, there's a lot of people going to the library.
Yes.
Yeah. President Crisher is in the local history department Friday afternoon, so he sees that after-school foot traffic coming in and out, and it's pretty hot in.
Spent three hours there researching, and it's a very, very vibrant place in the afternoon. It's really exciting to see all those young kids in there. It's great. All right, let's receive the treasurer's report and approval of the check register.
Thank you, John. I would say that I will echo Ashley, we don't have any anomalies to report. The numbers are looking great, and we're staying on budget.
All right. Do I have a motion then to approve the check register? Any questions on it?
All right, I make a motion to approve the check register for January 2025?
I second.
Have a roll call for that, please?
Marie Claire Goram.
Yes.
Phil Pardue.
Yes.
Mary Jo Williams.
Yes.
John Crisher.
Yes.
Approved, thank you.
All right, we'll move on now to receive the monthly report from the Master Plan Ad Hoc Committee under Vice Staff with Direction. Do I speak on that, Ashley?
Yes, and some of this is a little repetitive. We- we heard some of it at the top of the meeting. The legal agreement between the foundation and the city is still being worked on. And we hope to see that in the next couple of weeks so we can forward that on to city council. President Crisher mentioned, and I just want to remind everybody in the room of our guiding principles that we established for this project, which I think are important, which is that, you know, our- that our facilities are well-maintained and meet patron needs, that we maximize our service hours, that there's no negative impact to the workforce, there's no extra cost to the city residents, and there's minimal disruptions to services. So as we go through this process, these are things that the Board of Trustees are going to be keeping in mind. And to that end, we have another ad hoc committee that's working on identifying alternate location for services when we get there. And so that's actively being worked on. When I have more information, that'll be shared out with the public because that is paramount to all of us to make sure. We all just, you know, the- for me at least, the pandemic is still a very raw wound. Being close was painful. And so I've got very dedicated library staff who are incredibly creative and feel like they can library from just about anywhere. And so we'll be working on that. And that ad hoc committee is Mary Jo and Marie Claire. And I hope we'll have a more robust report out for you next month. Any questions?
So the, you know, this is titled "The Master Plan", we're kind of beyond that. So is it time to disestablish this ad hoc committee? Or get a new one with more of the design and approval? Or is that more of, do we even need an ad hoc committee for that?
I think that at this point, we could, as you point out, the master plan ad hoc, you know, we started off working on a master plan for both facilities. So yes, this is a trifle out of date. And I think we can disband and, and if needed, reappoint an ad hoc committee based on what the outcome is of contract negotiations and whatever the council- whoever the council decides to appoint in terms of the committee that's being proposed as part of that design process.
After a discussion with the board members here, can we disestablish the ad hoc committee today? Or is that something that needs to happen on the next- have a discussion and vote next time?
I would rather agendize it for next time since it wasn't agendized that way in the staff report. It's just receive a report out.
Okay.
I think it should be agenditized. But once the agreement is signed and then the committee that we're on, Phil, gets really finished, because we went through the-
Right.
-that part, and then it'd be time for another committee to the design.
And we go from there.
But that really, we can't move forward to that till we have an agreement between the city and the CPLF.
Okay.
Which should be very soon. So we could bring that up next meeting? Or when the- when we have our special meeting to on- on the contract, then we can bring it up right then? Would you- does that sound-
Yes, potentially, we could do that as well.
That would be-
Okay.
Any other questions from anybody else on that?
No. That's a good point.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. Receive report from the Carmel Public Library Foundation on recent activities. Alex.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Trustees, Ashley. So yes, this Carmel Public Library Foundation is working and continuing to work on the agreement between Carmel Public Library Foundation and the city of Carmel. In other news, the foundation continues with its program series in 2025. Earlier this month, we had a wonderful program about the remarkable history and contributions of GPS, which was really interesting. And on March 26th, we have a fireside chat at the library about media ethics and dialogue across boundaries with Dr. Patrick Belanger, who's a CSUMB professor. And so that'll be a wonderful program and opportunity for public discourse. And CPLF and Carmel Unified School District have teamed up again in partnership for a media literacy program for students in our community. So please join us on April 7th at the Carmel High School Theater. And also, please spread the word. Tickets are on sale for the foundation's annual fundraiser in support of our library this year. We're presenting the storyteller edition, A Life in Words, with Susan Arlene. And we hope to see all of you there. And please mark your calendars for the donor salute on March 9th, which is Sunday. We'll have our annual reception for our community and partners and anyone who has donated $100 and more to the library in the course of the year. So we hope to see you there. And- and that's all the news that I have right now.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. The next item we have is authorize the Carmel Public Library Foundation use the Harrison Memorial Library for the donor salute event Sunday, March 9th, and the Sterling Circle event Sunday, June 8th. We have a motion, I think. Any comment on this? Like-
Yeah, this is routine business for us. We do this every year for the Carmel Public Library Foundation. You know, it's- it's being proposed in compliance with the city support group policy. So just recommending that the city council cosponsor this event and approve the serving of alcohol at both of- both of these events, donor salute. We're cutting it close. We've done this once or twice in the past. So the request was submitted less than 30 days in advance. But in this instance, I think it's really important to recommend that this move forward. And again, I don't see any issues with this. And I will do a quick turnaround and get it on the city council agenda for their meeting next week.
I think we should have a motion to pass it right now? Do I have a motion to do that?
Yeah, make a motion to authorize the Carmel Library, Public Library Foundation to use the Harrison Memorial Library for the donor salute on event on Sunday, March 9, 2025, and the Sterling Circle event on Sunday, June 8, 2025. And then recommend that the city council cosponsor and approve the serving of alcohol at both events.
I second.
Have a roll call, please?
Marie Claire Goram.
Yes.
Phil Pardue.
Yes.
Mary Jo Williams.
Yes.
John Crisher.
Yes.
Approved, thank you.
Okay. All right. Do we have any future agenda items that we want to bring up?
So we have a- just for everybody's awareness, we'll have the potential for a special meeting coming up. So we'll just need to be nimble and be responsive to that request with regards to items seven and eight on the agenda. We will be getting back to our policy reviews next month, strategic plan. The disbanding of the ad hoc committee, whether that takes place at a regular meeting or a special meeting, I'll work with board president on that. And I would like to do a report out on- or have a- It's early for us, but I would like to have a draft of the budget in front of the Board of Trustees simply because there is a lot of things happening at the state and federal level, which might not seem like they affect us, but they actually do. And that's programs like our subscription to the New York Times and other trickle-down things that we're going to need to think about that- that may affect our services. And so I'd like to do a report out sooner rather than later just to get that in front of you. There's still information coming out. So I might not have concrete numbers, but something I think is good for everybody's awareness.
I think it's very important, the numbers that Ashley's been showing, we could have some issues with funding. And on a side note, one of my neighbors, his daughter is the director of a college library. And with the new things happening, she's been told to expect a 7% cut in funding. So I think we have to be very- get on this right away and kind of try to get ahead of it, which way we can go, so.
Right, and in hand-in-hand with that is our Pacific Library Partnership is working on some materials, talking points for all of us, for our elected officials. So our congressmen, our representatives here, for myself, other library directors in the area, to take to them, to advocate for all the things that libraries do, but also for all of you and for our community to share out. So I'll have more information of that in the next few weeks.
Right, thank you.
All right.
And if there's anything that comes up from any of the trustees or the public they want to see on the agenda, just reach out to me.
One final question. So the- on the recognition plaques and things like that, is it- this is the first, there may be more as we go through. Under the city code, the way it's evolved for the roles and responsibilities for the Board of Trustees, are we responsible for it, or is the city council responsible?
It's a joint responsibility, kind of how we've established how this will work with the- so that there's a policy that establishes the council has authority to approve plaques placed anywhere. But because the Board of Trustees has the authority over the facilities, and this would be part of something with the facilities, this would come to the board for recommendation to the council. Does that make sense?
Yes, so we'll see it again.
So you'll see it again, absolutely.
Is there anything else? All right, meeting adjourned.
Thank you, John.